Really drive the case to look at really spend a lot of money from the situation. So it's a call that you all need to make, but that information that we presented to you, we have, Danny, we got a letter from Shai Badli in the back at the recommendations. And they felt kind about it, right?
Right. Yeah. The biggest thing I said is the alternate. So the pay, the alternate right now is set as the project completes in May, wait four months and then pay starting September for the paving. They stopped engineers recommendations to wait for four months for settlement.
Four months, long enough, Darren.
Then they.
He can't talk about it. I know he can't. But I'm sorry. He can't see us.
They, they're, Shai's in the process of completing the survey for the rest of parts of paving on up to our lot lineup basically to the cemetery. So they're going to come back with recommendations for the cost estimates for additional paving in two areas. So what should be on the table, it basically be on the shelf ready to go when you want to fund it or what's really happening. They let that. You just need to know.
When are they going to be, when are they planning on being finished with the project?
Culver is May, the Friday before Memorial Day is complete Culver. They can start as early, I mean, that early start day was April 7th, but they can start with according to DOT rules, they can start prior to that free working days before April 1st, not count against it. But so the completion of May, the Friday before Memorial Day, wait four months, then we had alternate would start paving in September. And then just pave over Culver.
I'd like to probably see us wait as long as we could until fall or.
Do the paving?
Yeah, or possibly, I mean, I don't know. It depends on what it's like.
And we can work out.
I might even go even clear to the next spring and maybe even add that in. You know, if we kind of see what they come back with on the rest of it and if we want to do more, you know, what's the impact if we add that to more?
Right. If that be the case, Mary, I think that what you want to do is reject the alternate then. Because I don't know if it'd be fair to the contractor to wait that much longer after a whole season. Their price could go up on a yearly basis anyway.
But if you do it four months and it's not settled and it's not compacted and it falls apart, really even if it's $5,000 higher, it's still cheaper to wait than it is to do it.
I'm not disagreeing with that. All I'm saying is to say if you wait till the next year, you probably ought to not. I think it'd be unfair to the contractor to hold them to a bid that would be more than a year ago.
Actually, by then we'll have all the estimates for whatever section of paving you want to do. So you already kind of know what that section costs between the two estimates we had and the other.
Anybody else's opinion? So I guess I'd like to see a motion then to accept the resolution with removing alternate one from the bid.
So move.
Any more discussion?
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Darren?
Almost ten.
Approved resolution, fruition, approving contract for AMR installation services with utility use.
And that's just to back up. I know we already approved that contractor already using it, but we did not do it by resolution. So we just went ahead and did the resolution to cover what we're basically already doing. So.
Move approved the resolution.
Any discussion?
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Discuss and give direction on the electric rate increase.
You want to do that or you want me to? For what we talked about?
Yeah, I think, well, at this time, I think we're going to not do electric rate increase with the savings that we're getting from Southern Hour Electric and want to look at infrastructure to kind of see down the road in two or three years, maybe what our costs are going to be to do some building and then maybe try to do it, do it then because the gap between what we're going to be saving since it starts in January 1.
That's new information by the way. That's new information.
I was going to say, I didn't know that.
Oh, I thought I sent that to everybody. Maybe I didn't. I got an email and I thought I passed that forward to everybody that it used to be, it was April?
There was something I couldn't open.
Okay. It was going to be April and now they've changed it to January 1. I got a letter here too today from Greg. They have approved our 5% rate decrease.
Okay.
Is that, is that about equal to the rate increase they just done or more?
What, it's a little bit less than the increase by about.
We were looking at $80,000. This will take 50 of the 80. So we'll still lose about $30,000. But that's.
Not worth doing the rate increase.
Worth doing the rate increase for $30,000.
With the sewer plant coming and that kind of stuff with the other utilities that we're going to have to increase a little bit, I just, I think it'd be less burden on the citizens to just hold off.
This would be something at the earliest we'd revisit a year from now.
Yeah, because we got to get, we're getting infrastructure numbers with transformers and looking at all that. So once we get that information, then we can better know what we need.
Okay.
A little vote to do that would be helpful.
Yeah. So we just need a simple motion to not do the electric rate increase.
I move we don't do the rate increase.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Those. Discuss and give direction regarding a public hearing for the CIP.
Okay. Darren, when you were talking about at the last meeting about what was eligible for taxation, were you talking about rollback or were you talking about just properties that weren't eligible for, to consider in the evaluation? And the reason why I'm asking this is I did not calculate rollback in here and you're going to see in this presentation that our costs to taxpayers is going to be significantly less. But was it about rollback that you were talking about? Because I really couldn't understand that.
Remember what you said.
Well, at any rate, it gave me.
You've been on vacation.
That's right. It gave, it gave me cause to check this out and I really did. I went to the assessor, I went to Mike, I went to the auditor to understand this business about rollback. And to be honest with you, I really didn't pay much attention because I didn't think it was that significant. Since then, I have become rollback crazy about what's going on as far as property taxation is concerned. And the summary circumstance here is, is that I have correctly figured in my estimates and communications with you all in the past, what the tax rate would be. And I also figured how that would have an impact over time as far as the rate upon our tax base. What I didn't take into consideration was, is I look at 100% EAV. Nobody gets taxed at 100% of their EAV on their, on their home, their business. There's a very complicated mix of rollbacks that occur in the context of property taxations. For instance, for residential property, single family residential property, that rollback number changes every year by the state. It usually hovers somewhere between 55, 57, 58, 59%. Somewhere in that range. So in other words, if you had a $100,000 house, you're not being taxed on $100,000. You're being taxed on 55, 56, or $57,000. And the tax rate that I figured would have been assessed against that number. And that's what I incorrectly reported. The point being though is, is that the overall number, because I ratioed it up over how I calculated what the tax rate would be, is, is I looked at what our tax rate is now, and I looked at how much money that tax rate generates. In other words, I ratioed that to come up with the 341 of an increase. And admittedly, I put a little bit more in there just as a fudge factor. Well, I also went to Northland Securities and they sent back what you have in front of you right now, which is debt service schedules. And the top page, the top two pages is what would happen if you had a 10-year bond issue. And on the second page, I'll draw your attention to the assumptions and you can see that the bond term I highlighted is 10 years. The tax rate per thousand is 323. I had 5% higher, being conservative. But when you get down to what the taxable cost is, you can see a $100,000 house, $56,918 is what the, what the taxable assessed value is. And that generates $184. So in other words, when we were talking about a number that was at 100%, this is at 55, 56%, and that's the actual number that would be taxed for somebody for a $2 million bond issue over a 10-year term. Not quite, but almost half of what I was projecting. Now, if in fact, we had this put into place, my overestimate would not have shown up on the tax bill. What would have shown up on the tax bill because of the taxable value and because we had calculated the rate, because it would be calculated automatically for us based upon what we needed to get. Because if you go back to the front page and you can see the P and I totals of 234, 235, 235, I was saying that this was a $235,000 cost to begin on an annualized basis. So while I made a mistake in calculation, it would not have shown up on the tax bill. It would have been about 60% of what I had estimated. And I made that mistake, but I wanted to make sure that we understand what's going on.
I'm glad we took the time to check.
I am too. I am too. That's really good news, if you ask me. Because now all of a sudden, if we're talking about a $2 million issue, we're talking about $15 a month on a $100,000 house. I also gave you an alternative to consider if you want to. I ran this out with Michael Hart today, or not today, but yesterday from Northland too. And this is the same $2 million, but it is on a 12-year term instead of a 10-year term. And the resulting circumstance here is, is that while you can do a 12-year, I would never go beyond 12 years. And he would say the same thing because it's a street project. You can actually pull this number down to $120 a year, $10 a month, a tax rate of $2.80. $2.80, if we added that to our tax rate right now, it would still be less than the regional average. The 323 would be just slightly above the regional average. Regional average is around $3, $3.10. And that's assuming that there's no other increases. So that's the news to present to you. I haven't heard a whole lot of discussion about things as it relates to the CIP, if you want to make changes to it as far as projects are concerned. But if you look at this in context, this is nowhere severe as what was originally talked about as far as a cost to taxpayer. I'll take questions.
So let's say right now we're at 72 taxable valuation.
It'll be 73 next year. Because when I talked with the assessor, while their number isn't certified, she's already got figured out that it'll be about 73 taxable values.
About 73?
Mm-hmm.
So it's, we're close. We're not going to change much.
No, half a percent.
So let's say it goes up to 77.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to change that number?
Yeah, it will reduce it.
So we could, this is just basically the first year. So if property values keep increasing at a slower rate, at a slow rate or fast rate, however they're going to do it, then the levy, the levy will come down.
To offset the increase in property value.
The, the rate will come down.
The rate.
Not the levy. The levy is dollars. The dollars will be the same, but the rate will go down because you're spreading it out over a broader base. Now, I want to, I thought about that as part of the solution to this issue. And normally, if nobody was messing around with rollback, I would say, yeah, that's going to be good. But I can tell you right now that all apartments of three units and above are in an eight-year process of being reduced from a commercial rate at 90% evaluation. And they are ultimately by 2024 going to be at the same level as a single-family house. That's taken a lot of money out of the tax levy. There is also always pressure on taking out the backfill. You know what that is? When we levied this commercial reduction, there was a promise made to cities that, and school districts and counties, that this was an economic development effort and that the state would support that economic development by returning the money back to the local taxing bodies equal to or approximately equal to what was lost in, in this rollback of taxable value. Now, that almost was lost last year. In fact, it came down to the 11th hour of the last day of budget making till it, that fell out. But there was a concerted effort to do that irrespective of the fact that Governor Grantson said that you should never do that because this was a deal that was made with cities. I don't know how quickly we can forget about our deals. The fact of the matter is, is that that backfill money statewide is over $200 million. And if we lost that money, it would be a loss of probably in the range of, I think, $30,000. So the point being is, is that while I think that under circumstances that are predictable, you could say, yeah, you would see that rate go down. But the volatility about property taxation at the state level would give me caution to say, yeah, that's going to happen. Because over the last 20 years, we've seen rollbacks come on. And as a result, while we have as a state seen city government receive the same amount of property taxes on an inflation adjusted basis, we get the same amount as what we were a generation ago. The cost to a single-family resident has changed because the shift went from 40% to 51%. We're paying more even as, as a single-family resident, even though the amount that goes to cities, inflation adjusted, is the same.
I just want to make sure that the people are aware that if our values keep going up or something comes in and drives our tax revenue up, that we're going to.
The rate may go down.
The rate is maybe possibly going to go down so that we're not lining our pockets with the extra increase in.
The offsets may eat up part of.
And that's fine. I just want to make sure that the rate's based on dollar amount.
The rate's based on a dollar amount that we need to pay for streets, that it's not.
And that's what we're using it for.
That's exactly right. And in fact, that is prescribed by law. We can't.
I know that, but I'm just saying if the, if, if we need this much to pay this bill.
If we need $30,000 a year.
That's right. But if property values go up, just because property values go up, it would still give us more revenue because we're taxing more dollars.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that if that happens, that we give some of that back to the people.
Is tax, tax is the only revenue source we can apply to CIP?
No. And in fact, the CIP acknowledges that the other debt service that we have right now for streets, which is Franklin Street, is completely not paid for by property taxes. It's paid by local auction sales tax. And it takes up effectively all of the LOST.
What about utility funding?
You would do that in the context of gap filling, but you know, you're also going to be paying, if we're going to fix some streets, we might have to go underground and fix some of those utilities anyway. So we're going to be using utility money in that regard. But if we have a product, let's say that we do this $2 million issue. Michael Hart was asking me, well, you normally you would just go and say you bid out a project and find out, you know, how much you really need. And I go, no, I think that we want to be disciplined enough by saying, we're only going to do $2 million and that's how much we're going to go. Now, if the project comes in at 2.1 or if we have a cost overrun or something like that, as I said before in prior meetings, that we would use our reserves to gap fill, but we would not rely upon it as a primary source.
I'm not going to stop in the middle of the walk.
No.
Exactly, exactly. But we've got other methods to fund some overrun, to fund some unforeseen without having to come back in six, in a year and say, all right, we screwed up, you know, we're going to have to hit it again. I just want to make sure that if we do this, I want everybody to be on board and own it. And I want it to be what we're going to do. And I want it to be done for that. I mean, not the people, you know, I guess if we need to raise taxes to do it, that's what we need to do. But I want to make sure that there's also a chance that it could go down over time.
I'm not holding my breath, but yeah.
And that they're getting, they're getting what we're given.
And I think.
And what they're paying for.
And I think likewise to understand is, is that the intent of this was to look long-term too. And that is, is that after 10 years, technically you could say, okay, we're done with this. But the idea would be is, is that you keep doing the same $2 million.
We've got enough streets to keep going.
We've got enough streets to keep going for 40 years probably. Because by the time 20 years is done, you know other streets are going to be failing. And in fact, this average of $400,000 a year, I mean, you can make justifications that it needs to be double that. But we don't have the capability from a debt capacity to do double that. Now, I will say this one thing. If these numbers are attractive to you, and understand that Michael Hart put in here a quarter of point, 250 basis point fudge in here too. He was, he was being conservative.
They could come in less.
Right. Good. Which means we could do more projects.
And if you get a contract, a good contractor that comes in under estimate.
Yeah. We would wind up just doing, you know, more projects. That list is not going to be completed.
Right.
Do you want to do 2.5 million?
It's not due to that tax number.
What that would do is for the 180,000, you divided by four and add that to the 108. So you're talking about. $45,000 more a year. And the tax rate would go up correspondingly by 25%.
It'd go about right up to where you had.
Yes, sir. A little bit more, but about there.
So about 3.5.
Let me, let me crank it out for you. Three, no, it'd be more. It'd be four. We got 323, right? So. Yeah, it'd be almost four bucks. About, no, I take that back. I take that, it would be four bucks. It would be 323 on the money. So yeah, it would be, instead of 180, it would be. 225.
I think we better keep it at the two and use.
So you went from $15 a month to 1875.
If we go over that, then we figure on the utility.
The constitution and the cash reserves.
Yeah.
And see how that works out.
Hopefully you can do a, get a CBVG to go with it. I can let you do 2.6.
Well, you're not going to get CBVG for these.
You can get it for the utilities underground, but not for the streets.
But five years when we.
You know, that helps the project.
In five years.
Catch two more.
If we're going to do.
We've lost again.
Yep. Maybe at that point, maybe we add some more.
I tell you one thing about last. Right now is, is that technically it's not a 10-year issue. It's actually a 12-year issue. And there's going to be one year that if there's an overlap there, that we might wind up either using reserve or we might structure the debt on this a little bit differently so that we can pick up that extra year portion of that extra year.
And if we have two million built for a project and it only comes in at 1.8 and we roll the 200,000 in the next project, then maybe then you can figure on going 2.2.
Right. But let me say this about this. The market is really favorable right now. And what I'm asking for tonight is direction to now incorporate this into your formally CIP next, next meeting, but also to formally engage Northland Securities to help us do this. And that in January, we will have to have a pre, let's call it a pre-levy tax circumstances related to this debt service pass. Because if you want to get this into the cycle that we're talking about. we're talking about and into our budgets, we gotta receive this money by, like, say, March. So for us to get into that cycle right now, we gotta get this stuff done in January so that we can let the money have the money. And and how we expect to do these projects is is that once the money is going and we start probably doing the engineering work on it this summer, go out to bid in the fall and have construction occur next year, which is, I think, a reasonable schedule. We're not gonna be doing large chunks of town. We're gonna be going from one place to another. But I think the point being is is that this is the kind of project that we could probably do with that in that regard. We have three years from the time to receive the money to get it all spent if, in fact, we have to worry about arbitrage. And what that means is that you can't earn interest off of this money for a long period of time because then, in fact, you're defeating the purpose of having the debt service and taxing the people to restore the cost of the debt service because all of a sudden, you're being a banker, you're playing the float on the interest rate. But they give you three years to do it. And and the intent for us would be is is that we hit it done in about 18 months and something happens and you have another construction season. But that that would be the plan to do this.
So March of 2021 is the first time you'll see this on your tax bill.
It would be in October of 20. The first first time we actually will see, actually, we'll see it in the next fiscal year. From the standpoint that we would have our first interest payment in December, and we would have our first PNI payment next June. So all of the stuff that we do in this budget year would then show in the one that's coming up. It wouldn't be off that much because if we wait past the fiscal year, then it delays, but then we delay getting our money.
You're gonna collect.
2.35 next.
You're gonna collect 2.35 in September of 2020, but you're not gonna do any work till the spring of 21.
No, we're gonna collect the money in 19 and do the work in 20.
Oh, I'm a budget year.
Your calendar year. We're a budget year, okay? We're gonna be doing budget 1920, which starts February, or June, or July 1st. We will be getting the money before the budget year, but we will be budgeting it for that year as far as the payback is concerned, and we will still have to work in that year. We'll have the projects done in in calendar year 1920, or 2020.
You're gonna have expenditures you're gonna need to cover before the project starts too.
Yeah, we can, we can do that from the standpoint, we can do that from the standpoint of having the money on hand as early as March of this upcoming year. So you'll have the engineering costs there. You have all in hand so that you can get this stuff going. I mean, I think people waited long enough.
Yeah. But we gotta, if I'm just trying to, just so people are aware of when it's gonna hit their.
It'll hit, it'll hit their tax.
September of 2019 is when they'll pay their first increase for street repair.
That's correct.
Spring of 2020, hopefully, we'll break around.
That's correct.
Just to make sure this so everybody's aware.
And what we've estimated right now for $100,000 per house, it's $184 a year. And I think that that number could come down a little bit. I hope so. But coming down, if it comes down $10, that would be a big deal. But I I think that that's the range that we're talking about. And I actually figured that rate right. It's just that I didn't fight against the rate assessed valuation.
Yeah, cuz this is the number I was using, but we wasn't sure how either one of us got to it.
I know, but.
Part of this.
That's indicative of the complicated property taxes.
Is any of that number TIF?
No, no. The 20, the 72?
Is there some, is there more than that than that the TIF's against?
No, he doesn't figure that at all in TIF. TIF is inclusive, if you will, from the standpoint of assessment valuation. TIF is assessed, it it doesn't affect, TIF doesn't affect that number per se. What happens is is that TIF.
It's usually two numbers, one number for valuation and then a certain other number that is what we pull TIF off of.
In this particular circumstance, 72, 73 million is taxable. That's how we would figure this.
That's how, that's how Michael Hart did it today.
Well, I was just.
He knows about our TIF too. I was just clearing that.
Yeah.
No, it's fair formation too. So we want to set a public hearing for December 20th?
Yeah. And really, that's a public hearing at our own.
We've already had one, but since we went back and reviewed it, we're gonna go ahead and have another public hearing so that the people can ask questions.
The bottom line is right now, you don't have CIP.
So motion to set public hearing for CIP December 20th.
Go move.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Consider approve a contract with French Rennicker Associates of Verma survey related to the 2018 CBGG water main project.
Right, and that engineer assessment's in your package, $3,500. That'll come in, they'll do the engineer assessment, basically the survey on the right of way for water project clarifying if they need any easements for that project. Can I make just one comment about this? French Rennicker is is being recommended here because they have been involved with the CBG water main project for quite some time. And and that's really the reason why we're proposing them. I know that there's some discussion about potentially looking at other engineering firms for future projects. This is a situation where you don't want to change horses in this area.
I am assuming and everybody's aware that we received a $600,000 CBGG grant for water main project.
And 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 that's where a lot of your reserves are going because it's a $600,000 against a $1.1 million proposal. And we're not hoping to do anything about taxation in that. We're gonna try and do it all off our reserves. That's a huge, huge thinking about this. I mean, if you talk about this in context of the CIP, we could have had a $90 a month increase in property taxes to to do all of that project for about a $50 increase in property taxes, $40 increase in property taxes to pay off our our portion of it.
Now, that water main project, is that also on E Street?
Oh, it's all over the place.
Okay.
We got water main, we got Stewart and Jefferson, we got water main in four places.
Four of them.
The E Street project is is in an area where we have not incorporated it in the CIP, and that's a big question right here.
That's what I was getting at, is what's gonna be going through the streets and will that adjust our our dates on our CIP progress?
Well, I think probably the thing about this is is that we have to ask ourselves a question right now, not in the context of the CIP, but say, you know, when comes, when we come down the road, we all recognize that, you know, these things, the CIP, in fact, there's other extreme circumstances. We might be able to use, if you so desire, some of that $2 million to pay for that portion, given the fact it's all gonna be ripped up. We know that we're gonna pay for about half of it. I think that's one that we pay for half of it out of the utilities, utilities tearing it up. But the other half, I mean, you don't want to do half and then not do the other. The other half probably be something that, from my perspective, would be eligible out of that $2 million. But I don't think you want to do this about, I don't think you might do half the street.
No.
Do it all. To me, as far as E Street's concerned, that's the worst section of it. Not count out, but gravel area. That wasn't, not the CIP, by the way. All said, that wasn't high ranked. We got it to come up to Franklin, but not so.
We need, we're trying to get the motion to approve the.
We're discussing, we need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Accept resignation and approve hiring for open position.
Uh, yeah, Buddy Harsus resigning. And tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to recommend Dalton Johnson for next police officer. He's here tonight. And I, and advertising for next month, Nathan Johnson will be leaving here, be closer to home here next month.
Got a motion to accept Buddy's resignation and approve hiring Dalton. So move to Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Welcome aboard.
Approve advertising for police position. For the next one?
Yeah, sir, for the next, uh, next open.
Go ahead and start advertising next couple of months for it.
Move to approve advertising. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Approve purchase of diesel fuel.
What's the total that we approved?
Eighty-six.
Eighty, yeah, eighty-nine, it's in there. I think it's in there, eighty-nine. I I gotta tell you about this.
Especially in claims.
I gotta tell you.
We're not, we're in this.
I gotta tell you what happened here. I actually authorized this beyond my authority. We found out that we were gonna have a 6 cent increase the next day. And we saved 6 cents a gallon by me going, but beyond my authority by $1,400. I felt that that was, there was reason for discretion in doing that. You have to effectively confirm what I've already done, but I think that it was appropriate. I didn't think the city wanted to lose 6 cents a gallon.
It went down 25 cents since last month and right at the time we were buying, it was gonna go up 6 cents the next day. They actually called me and said it's gonna go up, because I called and required more price, they put it on the agenda. And then they said, hey, it's gonna go up 6 cents tonight at midnight unless you book it. So I went ahead and booked it, and then it's probably actually went up a few more cents. Yeah, it's gonna come out another 23 cents here, just what's going on over the Trump signing and stuff, Joe Peck and the Saudis.
We play the spot market really good. Move to approve diesel purchase.
All in favor? Prove claims as presented. Which transformer pad did they move?
With a trail there. Pulled that, pulled that transformer out of the ditch up on the fly. It was caving in. I've seen it, that dirt was rubbing.
So you moved it up to where you could get to it?
Yeah, just moved it up on the high ground, some platform. It was the same thing that was going on over here at USDA, but this is worse down in that hole, this downpour, and and question for season for when they're to be down. We haven't taken them down. There's actually two moving there. Steph's.
Is that one fixed?
No.
That's next.
We have the pad ready to go. We just gotta, we have to probably do that on Saturday, next year season.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Just one, Jake Boatley at Bloomfield, I just wanted to, you probably know that I'm heading up the wreaths across America program for Bloomfield. I signed this up about 10 months ago or so. Came to the council, got your blessings to do one of the cemeteries, you were doing the South Cemetery. The ceremony and the laying of the wreaths is December 15th, so we're coming down just over a week away. And the ceremony is December 15th at 10 a.m. at the high school gym. And then, after a short break, allow people to get out of uniform, place the wreaths on the South Cemetery. I just want to, Corrigan, invite the council and the mayor. You want to attend, don't worry, there's no speaking for you. You don't have to go up in front of people, say anything. But I just wanted to let you know that you are invited to attend the ceremony.
Do you have not help or do you have volunteers anywhere else?
It's like anything, you wait to see who shows up. I have several the FFA students who are gonna help. And through the online stuff, I've gotten several volunteers that say they're gonna show up, but we won't know until we get out there. So I think one of the biggest things, it's a small cemetery. We only have 100 wreaths coming in. There's 54 veterans at the South Cemetery. The remaining wreaths are gonna go to the IOF placed along the roadway so people can see the wreaths, kind of an advertisement for next year, so people can see what they are, what they look like. And hopefully, we can do this again next year and go for the larger cemetery, which is about 700 veterans in that cemetery. So the help I could really use would be people trucks. And it's not a whole lot, but the wreaths come in boxes. I think it's nine or 10 per box. So it's just a matter of transporting them. They will be delivered at the school. Amy Mosby is receiving those wreaths with the FFA facility there. So it's just gonna be moving them. They should be delivered next week sometime. I haven't gotten word yet as to when they're getting delivered. So the biggest help I think I could use would be people trucks to take them out to the cemeteries.
15th to 10?
15th at 10 a.m. Thank you.
Remind me.
Will do.
I'm using my truck.
Appreciate it.
What about a stock trailer?
That would help too. Anything that we could load those things on and get them out there.
Thanks. Anybody else have anything? Eric?
Budget time is quickly approaching, and we've been talking about schedules for this budget. One of the things I think that we should be doing, and I'll have you formally endorse the schedule at the next council meeting, but we have five Thursdays in January. I think the last day of January is the last Thursday. And for sure, I think we need to put that on as as a budget workshop day. We are going to do this in such a manner that we have to get this thing with a public hearing and approval right around the end of February, beginning in March. We have a March 3rd, I think, council date, or March, no, I think that that, yeah, March, March 14th is the first council day that we have in 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 March, because of the way the calendar works. So it may very well be that we need to have a special meeting on Thursday, the 28th of February, to actually approve the budget. And we have to have it published enough in advance that we have to have that publication that was 10 and 20, so we gotta have it published, not that week, but the week before then for its public hearing. So what that means is is that we'll need to have some of the council meetings dedicated to doing the budget. And I need to talk with you all as to whether you want to have another workshop meeting for the budget prior to the 28th, when we would schedule that special meeting for its approval. Now, what that means is is that if, in fact, we have to make adjustments to the budget or there's something that has to be done on the 28th, we'll still have time to do it. The deadline is March 15th. March 14th is the last, the last council meeting that we can. The deadline is March fifteenth. March fourteenth is the last, the last council meeting that we could have. So the intent is, is to give ourselves a two week buffer and have this thing approved on the twenty-eighth and, and use that extra time in case you need it. The, when I attended the. Budget workshop at the Department of Energy, but I rented it, accident, and I both met. Ted Nielsen, talking about scheduling these things and then he strongly suggested that you give yourself a two week buffer just in case something happens. But what that means is, is that also that we're going to have to start getting earnest, talking about budgets in, in January. I've had three people make, he raised three completely different realms about budgets that are not within the organization, but. People asking for what, what the process is going to be related to like the. The money that we get out of the hotel, motel, but there's another one too. But we, we have to, we have to figure out how you want to do that process, which we do at the end of the night. But I want you all to think about that at the next meeting, it's how you want to do that. I'd expect that, that January, February is going to be a busy time because of budget and that will be a primary focus of a lot of things.
Hotel motel applications, don't they go out in the middle of February, do the first of March?
I believe so.
I, I would think that maybe we'd do that earlier, get that over with.
I'm just saying, I think there's a.
There's a resolution.
There's a resolution or something that states something.
I'll look that up.
We'll take a look at it, maybe we'll make a recommendation to change that. I think it'd be better if we got that a little earlier.
Yeah, I mean, I just.
Anyway, that's, that's the big concern. I, I know that Main Street's going to have, at the next meeting, a whole lot of stuff that they want to talk about. Emmy said, oh, I want to talk about this, this, and this. She loaded my computer today with all kinds of information. But what she's got is worthy of an agenda item for the next meeting, so. Be kind, be aware that that will be on the next agenda.
Put it all at times. Danny?
A couple things. First thing, automated meter installations started. They were here on Monday, right Monday. We actually have one installer that's out here working during the week. He's actually buying tonight, completing about a hundred meters, so a hundred gas and about, or I'm sorry, fifty gas and fifty water. He's doing one both at each time where he's going, so. So he's getting moving. And we're going to have one installer until Christmas and then after the new year, they'll have two to three installers going around installing, so. Making progress there and everything seems to be going okay right there. Biggest thing is, will we send out more flyers in the bill that'll go out next one, just for FYI, and he's going to be putting door hangers on places he needs to get inside to do wire meters, so he'll be doing that, so. People will start getting those, it'll be a call soon. And those will actually, when they call on the door hanger, they'll call with his schedule and then they'll set his appointments for that. So it really doesn't affect us much, except for solving problems. I'm sure they'll call us, but. Second thing was, I know the mayor asked me today about some fleet stuff and insurance. I want to talk about that for a bit. This fleet report, this has every piece of equipment the city owns in there. And I gave a copy to the police chief, fire chief too. One thing has happened every year, I know that Sandy does this with a purpose. This is ICAP, which is our insurance provider that do our insurance. So really, every piece of equipment, including high dollar equipments, so like the SCBA for fire, some of that kind of stuff. And if there's police officer equipment, radios, and that kind of stuff, anything we need to insure, whether it's in vehicles, buildings, you name it, all that, we need to make sure it's on our ICAP report that we get insured, so. So this other, just director and chiefs, you need to look at that and make sure we get everything added to that, so we want to look at that and verify. So if you look at this fleet report, on the right-hand side, basically where it says insurance active, those are the things, if it says yes, which is majority of the three pages, all have insurance covered by insurance. The stuff that's in yellow is not insured. That's basically what it says. And like on the park traders, big thing, I was a trader, just bought, I think, the last year, early la, or this year, end of last year. Doesn't have insurance on it. The, next one Iowa forty-eight eighty-one, that's the boats out the lake. Of course, a couple of tools and one patching trader. And then on the backside, you see very last page, talks about the new squad car, the new back truck, and a new camper van. Those are not insured and we can't insure them until we get a title. So in the process of collecting those titles, then we'll insure them once we get the titles back. So other than that, everything's insured with exception of, most of this equipment that doesn't have any comments on the right-hand side, that's, I think. We have to go through and try to scrub that. I think most of this equipment's been sold or it's gone, it's off there. How this report was generated is basically three ways. One is, we accumulated a report from the county treasurer of everything that was registered to the city of Bloomfield. So that's anything that's been registered at one time and we pulled those out. This also came from the ICAP list where we pay insurance on, so that list. And the other thing was equipment list that I generated of everything, basically, and going through all the titles. Going through all the titles, all the registration from the county, and then all of our stuff is insured, compiled this list, and this is basically the difference, and trying to settle that out, so. I think we need to look at, of course, the, I asked the chiefs, look at the PD side, verified vehicles. The fire chief, look at his stuff, unverified vehicles and traders, and then I'll finish up with the public works on our side, so. But right now, as far as public works goes, everything that's rolling stock that we're driving and using is insured with exception of the, the back truck and camper van that are parked and not being insured. Something in the cabin, I found. I just, it's not insured, but that's, it's waiting to sell. Everyone doing, it's just sitting there, so that's the. I guess my goal is, we're going to, hopefully have a new mechanic start soon. I think that'd be a vehicle worth putting five hundred dollars into and then auctioning off and make a lot more money on it than what it is right now. Because it's not running, it needs, I think, a fuel pump. So.
Any questions? The ones that say verify, what's that mean?
Those, I think we do have those traders, I just need to verify them. Want to go through the serial numbers, I'll put my hands on them. I haven't put my hands on every physical piece of that, and there's two traders that haven't done it yet, so I want to verify those. We have stuff scattered all over town. I think one of those traders could be the, well, I know the yacht club, that's the boat trader, which is out. And then one could be the, the trader at the flag's running out of the cemetery. Every time I turn around, I come up with a trader or mower somewhere, so, yeah.
The ones that don't say anything you don't know?
Don't know anything about them and, and I haven't seen them in vehicles, so I think those are things that registered with us, have been insured that, that we don't have any longer. I've talked to some of the staff that's been around a while, like they said, like that one, Public Works sixty-two, well, the case, J eighty, that was one that's traded years ago when they bought the new John Deere backhoe. One of the explorers, I thought was sold. Sandy Blazer was a blue one, the PD head that they sold a long time ago at auction, and all that kind of stuff, so it's stuff we just got to get off our books.
And any vehicles that we don't have or being removed, like the bucket truck and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, that's all right, right. The next step will basically be, after this, of course, by the twentieth, we have a deadline, we need to make sure everything's done with insurance. That'll be the next step we're going to do, is make sure that things up to date with insurance. The second part of that is, make sure everything has a registration. We're going to make sure there's a registration, a copy of the, proof of insurance in every glove box, every vehicle. And then, uh.
Didn't have to write ourselves a check. Chief, you got anything else?
Trent's graduating next week, so we'll be good. And, but then we got somebody else leaving for the academy, but we'll have Dalton to fill their spot. We got our car back, our new vehicle, and I think we're, we're set. All I got.
Fire chief?
Been in the process of, I ordered pretty much the last of all the equipment today that was on the grant application. Been doing some research and trying to get the best bang for the buck, negotiating best deals, so. Hopefully in a few weeks, we'll see some big large boxes showing up and a large, a lot of new equipment showing up. Uh, the new turnout gear's working great. No complaints there. Other than that, we're doing really good. The fundraiser was a huge success. We're still waiting on final numbers. The weather was kind of crappy, but we had a nice crowd there. Everybody was pretty happy. Well, not to get windy, man. So. Other than that, we're doing really well down there.
It was a good turnout. I went, Earl was there. It was, it's a fun evening, man. Get away a lot of stuff, they did a good job. Good dude. They ran a food bank up there. It was gone.
Wouldn't even hang leftovers. I guess there's baby ones there for you.
Amy?
Um, not a lot to report. Uh, we do have a big weekend coming up. We have twenty-six floats in the parade for the first year. Thought that was a win, because we don't really know what that means, but, um, so that seems to be going well. Mayor and I went to a meeting on Tuesday up in Des Moines. Thought that went very well. They went over TIP rules three sixty. Projects for housing, so we got a lot of information on that, um, that we'll go into when we talk about the incentive programs for new businesses. I got two or three new businesses that are. Very close making decision as to whether or not they're going to open up downtown. I'll have more information about that next week, um, when they get some more things solidified. But this weekend, if you get a chance to come down and be part of the parade, please do. It's going to start at seven, the judgment will start at five thirty. And there's other things going on. The choir's going to sing, the panelists dance, kids are going to be dancing. Then we have the festival trees, which is silent auction for, look, stars happening from twelve to seven on Saturday. A display contest for forty-six. You know you have one, just wear it. And CNN will be at these houses for forty-six as well. And then the choir will be singing, the historical museum has an open house going on that are outside of Main Street, playing there. So there's a lot going on this weekend.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody from the council have anything? You didn't have a third in the morning. Jack, you got anything? That ought to make you feel good for a while now. Scott, you got any? Earl?
No. I guess Coast to Reef was good, I think.
Better than the Africa drill. My comments, like I said, I went with Tammy to Des Moines Tuesday to Main Street meeting. They talked about TIP a lot and rural housing three sixty. It was very informational and learned a lot. We're going to have a guy here Monday that's going to talk some more on rural housing three sixty. Gary was talking about meetings, getting busy with the budget. Hopefully this meeting Monday might make it even busier because I hope we are going to have to start having some discussions on that kind of stuff too, so.
Yeah, that's going to take a lot of fiscal planning.
Yeah, it is, but I'm saying it's going to.
Good planning.
Yeah, but it's going to have to progress forward in a. In a timely fashion so that we don't, if it's possible, we don't lose out. So, other than that, I don't think I have anything else for mayor comments, so. Need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa code twenty point one seven three, negotiating session strategy meetings of public employers or employee organizations. May mediation and the delivery process of arbitrators shall be exempt from vision of chapter twenty-one.
This should be a quick meeting. Do you want to go in there? Is your room? I don't know if it's open.
We will be closed. During after this.
I think it will be adjourned now.